Voters in East Honolulu, from Hawaii Kai to Waikiki, will once again have an opportunity to cast ballots for either Trevor Ozawa or Tommy Waters in the race for Honolulu City Council District 4. The Hawaii Supreme Court invalidated the results of last November's general election in this race. Ozawa beat Waters by 22 votes last fall and by 41 votes four years earlier. Learn where these candidates stand on the issues. Tonight's live broadcast and livestream of Insights on PBS Hawaii start now.
Aloha and welcome to Insights on PBS Hawaii. I'm Yanji Denise. A week from today, the city and county of Honolulu will mail ballots to registered voters in Council District 4, which runs from Hawaii Kai to Waikiki. There are only two names on the ballot, Trevor Ozawa and Tommy Waters. Ballots in this race will be counted on April 13th. If you are not registered to vote, there is still time. We'll explain how later in the show. We look forward to your participation in tonight's broadcast. You can email, call, or tweet your questions, and you'll find a livestream of this program at pbshawaii.org and on the PBS Hawaii Facebook page. Now to our guests. Trevor Ozawa won the seat in 2014 and was ahead in the final printout last fall before the state Supreme Court's decision. He is an attorney who specializes in civil litigation. Tommy Waters is also an attorney who served previously in the State House of Representatives. He and others successfully challenged the outcome of last fall's race. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
The last time you were on, we asked you what the top issue was for you in the district. You answered homelessness and you said monster homes. So I'm interested to know if anything has changed and how, if it is the same issue, how you'd address that. He went first last time, so we'll let you start.
Thank you. I would say homelessness, you know, from continuing to walk the district. We've seen that homelessness is just one of those problems that we continue to throw money at the city and county. And I think that moving forward, we need to really consider handing a good chunk of the budget away from the government and give it to the nonprofits, right? And let them do what they do best. Mental health services, nonprofits, professionals that can provide these people with their resources. We've put in over $100 million over the last four years when I was on the city council. And it's just, it's just we continue to throw money into buildings that we're purchasing for the city and county and the Department of Land Management and putting homeless people in there. And I don't think it's actually solving the problem. The homeless rate is continuing to go up. You can say this year, there was a little bit of a downturn in the point in time count, but the number of unsheltered homeless went up.
So do you think that Housing First isn't working?
Look, the mayor's been pushing Housing First his entire tenure, and I do not think that it's working because our numbers do not seem to be going down. So I think that we need to start to turn to the professionals and give money to some of these nonprofits, mental health services, that can actually address the problems where government cannot. And it's important for government to know where it cannot help specifically. I supported the Hygiene Center that I saw in Seattle and supported its implementation and creation here, the first ever on Oahu on Kuheli Street by the Dole area, Dole Theater area in Iwile. And in that facility, you can get your clothes washed for free, take a shower for free, get some health services. And now the lieutenant governor is stepping in to help out with those types of initiatives, and I fully support that.
Okay, well homelessness is what you identified last time. Do you still think it's the number one issue in the district?
Absolutely. And I disagree with Mr. Ozawa that we're not, I believe we're not doing enough, right? I live in the Kahala Towers, right? There's a woman who lives right outside of my building at the bus stop. There's a new guy living across the street at Time Supermarket. There's people living in the bushes, both Maoka and Makai of Diamond Head Road. There's people living in the bushes of the top of Wilhelmina Rise. I, you know, I looked at the proposed budget that the mayor put in, 5.7 million for Housing First Initiative, 1.2 million for home vouchers, 1.5 million for Halei Maoliola Navigation Center, 1.5 million for Punahouai Rest Stop. That totals about $10 million of new money. In the same budget, there is $10 million for beach restoration at Alamoana Beach Park. We're putting the same amount of new money as for beach restoration. If this is our number one issue, which I believe it is, we need to work all our might to solve the problem. Working together with the state, working together with the federal government as much as we can and knock it out. You know, when I say working together, I don't just mean politicians. Everybody from the top down, police, our courts, social workers, I mean everybody, working to knock this out. It is our number one issue. I've walked 15,000 doors now. Everybody tells me the same thing. This is horrible. When we were kids, we never used to see it, homelessness the way it is now. It's terrible because my kids are now seeing this and they think it's normal.
So you're saying that it's a lack of resources. He's saying basically it's an allocation of resources. How much more money do you think needs to be thrown at this to actually make a difference?
Well, we need to talk to the professionals to find exactly what they need. Mental health issues, substance abuse issues, I see as a number one problem. And the Department of Health has cut, you know, their adult mental health division has been cut over the years. You know, mental illness is treatable. We need to get out there and treat mental illness. I think that'll solve a lot of our problems. Like I said, right outside of Kahala Mall, there's a woman living at the bus stop. She screams into the sky all day long. She has a mental health issue and we're not providing the services. So it's a combination of both, the government and nonprofits.
Do you think that more money needs to be put into this?
I think that, like I said, the money needs to be allocated appropriately and continuing to just give the mayor more money in his operating budget is not the solution. I think some of those projects that are outlined in the budget, as Mr. Waters said, are good projects, right? Halei Maoliola, the Wayfinding Centers, the Hygiene Center, those are good things. But the amount of money that we have allocating has been upwards, I think, over $100 million in the last four years. I've seen it. And a lot of it just doesn't go to the right places. It's being used for purchasing of buildings. Like on Young Street, we purchased, the city and county purchased a building that was a commercial building. It has blue tint on it. You can drive by it and it's under construction now. How many people are we going to put in there, right? Is that going to solve the problem? Are we seeing the results that we can actually see for ourselves? You know, not a statistic, even though the statistics are still bad. We're not seeing, like he said, we're not seeing a decrease around us. It is getting worse. And the neighbors really do think that our money needs to be spent appropriately. And I think the next thing is we've got to change direction. Giving more money to the professionals in the nonprofit world that do this, have done this for decades. There's a lot of great people in that world that should be given more resources to do it on their own and see what happens. New York City got rid of homelessness in the center of Times Square and around that area, the middle of the city, by giving a lot of money to a nonprofit organization in which they allocated specific social workers to work on a case-by-case basis with a roster of like 10 people per person, right? So their goal for that year was to get these 10 people off the streets. And they paid these people a decent wage and got them, held them accountable to like, look, these 10 guys, help them, find out what their problems are and get them out. I think if we're spending $100 million, something like that type of program should be at least tried.
I know that you said that you wanted to put more resources toward this. If you do that, something else has to suffer. Obviously, we don't have unlimited funds. These are taxpayer dollars. Where does the money come from?
Well, before we get to that, you know, the IHS is a privately run or nonprofit that runs IHS, right? There's groups home, homes like the Sierra House on Sierra Drive. These things work. The city is doing that. I'd like to see a little bit more of that. But you're right, it's a budgetary issue. Where does that money come from, you know? And apparently, we're gonna, according to the mayor's budget, we made a revenue of $108 million through increased property values. So the property value went up, they have $108 million. How about allocating a portion of that towards homelessness? Again, we've just got to prioritize, right? What is our priority here? And my opinion, and this is from walking door to door, and I believe there was a recent poll done, everybody believes the same thing, homeless. Even Trevor's changed from monster homes to homeless, right?
Well, you know, you're rather critical in this answer and sort of known to be rather critical of the administration. You're seen as sort of a check on the mayor, if you will. If you are elected, is your role, can we expect an antagonistic relationship from day one with you and the current administration?
No, I look at everything on a case-by-case basis, and I think that it's important that we have a check and balance with the mayor. There are a lot of things that the mayor and I have agreed on, like putting money towards preserving environmentally sensitive areas like Paico Ridge. Although there are some hiccups there that he and I, we can't seem to get that part done yet, and we're in the middle of it. We were in the middle of it. Connywise Spring, you know, the Kaevi Coast, those are the things that we agree on, right? And he signed a number of my bills into law. No sleeping, no lying down at bus stops so that people can get in and out of the buses easier. The Waikiki Beach Special Improvement District, he signed that into law. I was down there at the beach. But the things that I disagree with the mayor on are rather large things and more policy-driven differences because I represent my district, right? He represents the whole island. I'm fighting hard for my district because our district is unique. And for the things that matter the most to me, like making sure that we don't have overtaxation and increased fees that affect us tremendously, it's really important. Same thing with rail, you know? Shouldn't be rail at all costs. We disagree on how to fund that. I don't support using property taxes for the construction of rail, and he does.
Well, let me ask you, how do you propose we pay for rail?
So wait, let me answer her question, which was, will it be an antagonistic position from day one? No, I'm going to take things on a case-by-case basis and I'm going to fight for my district.
Okay, we're going to get to rail in a minute, and actually, the questions are piling up. We do have a lot of rail questions, but I want to ask you sort of the flip side of that. You're labeled as a supporter of the mayor. Can we expect you to be a rubber stamp? Will you serve as a check on the administration? What do you see your role as there?
There's checks and balances, right? That's just, we're constitution bound by that, right? The legislative body keeps the administrative body in check. And then the judicial body looks at both the mayor and the council. So, you know, I take that role very, very seriously, you know? And I will, I'm already going through the mayor's budget bit by bit, and if I were elected, what I would fund and what I wouldn't fund. For example, I would not fund trash pickup. I don't think that's fair. People are paying a lot of property taxes. As I mentioned, we're going to have $108 million in revenue from increased property values. That's a lot of money. Why do we have to increase the tax for garbage pickup? You know, the mayor and I, we were initially elected together in the State House in 2002, and we disagreed then, and we've had disagreements now. But I think the difference is that we could sit down and work together to find solutions. You know, there's a lot of things going on in our district, from little things that could be solved with a good working relationship with the mayor. But I'm not afraid to take on the mayor either and, you know, for things that our district needs and wants. And by the way, my obligation is to this district first.
We want to get to rail. Obviously, that's a hot issue. We have two people writing in, and I know that there are more questions on this. "Do you have any knowledge of a date that Hart will need to have $700 million federal dollars in their account? If the funds become unavailable, how do you propose to cover the funding needed to continue moving the construction forward to its conclusion?" That's Dave writing in. And John in Waikiki wants to know simply, "Who supports rail?" Gentlemen, we'll start with you.
Sure. I don't know exactly what date their, Hart is supposed to have $700 million from the federal government. At this point, I don't believe we're going to have any money from the federal government at this point.
You don't think we're going to have any at all?
Not at this point, not right now. At some point, maybe in the future perhaps? But look, let's not kid ourselves. The mayor's top attorney received a target letter. The Department of Justice has sent three federal subpoenas. They don't investigate civil matters, right? There's a criminal question that has tainted this project at this point. There's been no official, there's been nothing other than those, right, that we've seen so far. But what concerns me is that at this point in time, we really need some clarity on what to do because there are questions that we need to have answered. That's why I support having this forensic audit. Because moving forward, if we're going to be talking about the budget and allocating millions and millions of dollars towards this project, we need to see that we are even legally able to move forward on that project at this time.
I mean, to be clear, we know that there was a target letter, but we don't know the substance of the investigation. We don't really know where that is going. So it's not necessarily, you know, a fair conclusion to say that the rail is, you know, is corrupt. I think that where you're going with that is a little questionable.
No, I think that, I think that the three federal subpoenas that came from the Department of Justice are not, should not be taken lightly. And I think that seriously, at this point in time with the budget at hand, I would ask both the FTA, perhaps the Federal Department of Transportation, whether or not, for some guidance as to what we are able to fund on that project as of today, given the fact that three subpoenas have been received by the rail. The governor, apparently, this is from reports that I've heard, the governor was supposedly in a meeting with Elaine Chao, and I think that the topic of rail was not allowed to be discussed due to this moving forward. That's what I was asked by another reporter, something to that effect. And so if that is true, that is really concerning. That is really concerning.
If the federal funds are not available, I mean, we're talking about a lot of money there, does the project continue?
I don't know how we could afford to do it without federal help. I think this is one issue that Trevor and I are in agreement with. I not only support a forensic audit, I support a forensic investigation. I'm concerned that we're going to spend $2 million on an audit that will come up with the same outcome as what the state had already done. So an investigation, I think, would be more appropriate. There's a lot of money being spent. Geez, the feds already gave us $803 million. Where did that money go, right? I'd like to, I think the council really should look into it a lot more clearly and in-depth to find out where every single penny went.
When we do those kinds of audits, not that they shouldn't be done, we slow the project, we increase the cost of the project. You know, at what point are you satisfied that there has been enough? If you hear from Hart, they will say, well, we've been audited multiple times, you know, I think three or four just in the last 12 months. So what specifically are you looking for?
Well, let's see where we made the mistakes. Where did all this money go? I'm hearing that we have a dozen people making $500,000 a year. Why? Why are we paying these people that kind of money? Could we do it cheaper? Do we need that? You know, one of my friends is a mason, and he was working on the rail. And, you know, one inspector came and stopped work. And then before you know it, he said there were seven inspectors there. Why is, and this was 11 o'clock at night, why are there seven inspectors there? And we're paying each of them overtime? That's just ridiculous.
Still, a lot of questions on rail. I want to get to some of the other issues, though. This kind of ties into the homeless issue as well, but these are two questions that are related. "Would you considering putting a moratorium on any future developments of luxury timeshares, hotels, or condominiums in Waikiki? Why or why not?" And the next caller wants to know the candidate's position of the cost of living. Local residents are being forced out due to greed on behalf of investors. Your district obviously encompasses lots of residences, but it also encompasses our visitor industry. Let's start with you. What do you think about a future development in Waikiki?
No, I think that's what Waikiki is for, you know? That's the goose that laid the golden egg. And I think we should welcome people to come to Waikiki. The issue that I have is when tourism spills over out of Waikiki into our neighborhoods with transit vacation rentals, and it's changing our neighborhoods. I think that's what people are really concerned about. We have these, like hotels in Hawaii Kai, in Aina Haina, in Kuleo Oo even, and people are just kind of upset about that. We're about to have 10 million people visit Hawaii. 10 million! You know, we never thought that this would ever happen, and it has. But I'd like to restrict that to Waikiki.
Is 10 million too much? Should we be aiming for a lower visitor count?
I'd rather have less visitors who spend more money, quite honestly. And perhaps luxury hotels can achieve that.
What's your take to the caller, Patricia, in Waikiki asking about a moratorium on timeshares and other development in that area?
I've been a big supporter of revitalizing Waikiki for the next generation. I mean, we've seen everything in Waikiki start to crumble, really. If you take a look around, before Beach Walk, before Kohio, what was there? I mean, I remember there was just some small restaurants underground, not a lot of traffic, kind of a dark and dingy area. It was crime-ridden as well. We've actually seen a revitalization down Kohio that we've never seen. And there has been some diversity there. It's not just luxury. There are, for example, the Hilton Garden Inn, right? Still expensive. I think everything in Waikiki is expensive, whether you're at the Holiday Inn or the Sheraton or the Hilton. It's all expensive in Waikiki because there's a huge demand for people to come here. So I support revitalizing Waikiki. I do like the fact that we are seeing rentals and affordable rentals come into Waikiki as well. Some ownership opportunities, some investment opportunities for locals as well, and some rentals. So I like a mixed bag in Waikiki. And I think that the more new turnover of these older buildings, even refurbishing of these old buildings, if they want to stay, make them safe. They're doing that across from the food pantry in Waikiki. There is about, I think, four or five walk-ups, two to three stories, that will be revitalized in the next couple of years to be rentals. And so they're preserving that character, which is nice about Waikiki, but making them for the 21st century, which is nice. Most of our stuff is from the 60s, 50s.
You know, a lot of what we hear is our questions, you know, it almost seems to matter what the topic is on Insights. People want to know about the cost of living here in Hawaii and how we can get that better under control. What can the council really do to address that for the average working person? How can they make life a little easier?
Well, may I just address the Waikiki thing, issue? We have a lot of people living in Waikiki. I mean, quite a bit. And my concern is crime in Waikiki as well as the homeless population in Waikiki, people on the sidewalk. I walked through there about a week ago, and my life was threatened. You know, this guy had a sign that said, "Let's be real, I want money for beer." So I'm looking at him, and I thought, gee whiz. And I didn't say a word, and he said, hey, I'll blow your head off. Like, oh my God, can you imagine with tourists, even local people living there have to deal with that every day? Just unacceptable. Noise pollution in Waikiki is another big deal that I'd like to tackle. You know, I don't, I'd like to see more stronger ordinances dealing with noise pollution. To answer your question as far as, well, can you repeat the question?
Yes, yes, of course, the cost of living. What can the council specifically do to make life a little bit easier for folks here in Hawaii?
Well, at the very least, don't approve the fees for trash pickup, you know? I would have not approved the vehicle weight tax, right? I think, I have a Toyota Tundra. I pay over $400 a month for my vehicle weight tax. We could increase the exemption, which is currently going through the council now for homeowners. Like I said, when your value goes up of your home, the, your tax rate, the tax rate stays the same, but you're still paying more taxes. Well, how about increasing the exemption so you can keep you in your home? There's a lot of little things like that that I think we could do to help people survive here in Hawaii. By the way, I'm the fifth of six kids here, born and raised here in Honolulu, and I'm the only one left. All my siblings moved to the mainland. My parents moved to the mainland and passed away on the mainland because they couldn't afford to live here. You know, I'm an attorney, and I work really hard, but still, I struggle too, you know? And I feel people's pain. It's not easy.
What's your take on that?
Like Tommy, I'm the only sibling left on this island. I come from a family of four. The closest one, my brother's on the Big Island. But my two sisters live in the mainland. And it's tough to see all of my classmates really from the district that have gone off to college in the mainland, pretty much they've all stayed there.
So what can the council specifically do to help those folks be able to afford to come back?
So the cost of living, number one, our housing prices are the most expensive part of anybody's budget on this island, whether you're young, whether you're retired. It's so expensive. I think that, I've been down at the council and I've advocated and testified on behalf of myself and, you know, constituents, that for the property tax exemption to be increased. And I support that, and I've said before in the budget meeting a few weeks ago, that I support it being even more than what council member Heidi Sunio, she's proposed. She proposed it go up to $100,000. It's currently at $80,000. And we're only talking, that's not that much, right? At a $3.50 rate, you're not talking a lot. What was disturbing, though, was that the deputy budget director at that meeting said, "We don't support this because we've got to start preparing to pay for the rail that's coming in 2020." And that was disturbing to me. How is our cost of living going to go down if we just continue to have rail at all costs? The cost of living in Honolulu will be dictated by what that, what the cost of rail is and that impact on our city functions. Because that's why you see the mayor proposing the increase to the trash fee, or creating a trash fee, the increase of the vehicle registration fees, right? Which were in year two of, three of his increases. In addition to that, the increase on our tax rates across the city, these are things that the mayor said he would not do when he was campaigning for mayor in 2016.
But aren't we too late to stop the project? I mean, what would you suggest we do? Just leave the guideway up as is and call the whole thing off?
I think if there's ever a time to really reevaluate exactly whether or not we can afford to do the entire route at this time, it's right now. It's right now, and it's critical that we have an open mind and we stand up to special interests and say, and the mayor, who are seemingly about building rail at all costs.
So you would be willing to just scrap the whole project?
No, absolutely not. Let's be clear. I think that at this time, it's already built almost to the airport. I think Middle Street has always been talked about. I think at Middle Street, there have already been contracts that have been out there, released and accounted for. But obviously, now that seems like there's a lot of questions from the Justice Department, somewhere around there, whether it's Middle Street or the airport, at this time would be a nice time to have everybody come back together and really evaluate, where's the money gone? How much is this really going to cost if it does go to Alamoana? And are we open-minded enough to see that we need to look at possible other options? It cannot be rail at all costs.
What do you think of that? Do you think that it would be possible to scrap the whole project if we don't have the funding to continue the operational cost?
Oh, absolutely. If we don't have the funding, then we can't finish it. But again, this is one of the issues where I think Trevor and I see eye to eye. He's endorsed by Damian Kim, who is the chair of Hart, and Peter Riarte, the Mason's Union. You know, so there's a lot at stake here. There really is. Pardon the pun, but the train has left the station, right? There's a lot of money at stake, and I agree, we need to look at it and see, I feel, see where the money is going and if we can do it more efficiently.
We have a question here on a totally different topic, but something that's in your district and a lot of people care about, and that is the Cocoa Head Trail. It's a popular attraction. I saw it advertised the last time I was on Hawaiian Airlines, and I thought, oh no, don't tell everybody. But everybody knows, thanks to Instagram and everything else. The trail obviously needs improvement. It could be dangerous for some folks out there. What do you think we should do about it?
I think that we need to put money towards it. And this year in the budget, Councilmember Ratahan, who is now the budget chair, put in $1 million for improvements to it. I'm thankful for that. And I think that if the city and county is going to, if the mayor's going to be willing to use that money for it, because sometimes we put money in the budget and he doesn't use it, he just moves it around. But I think in this case, if he's willing to say on the record that he supports improving that area and taking ownership of it, then we need to see some improvement soon because it's a hazard. I hike that thing all the time. I went up there just a few weeks ago, in fact. And what happens is, there's a coalition, a coconut coalition, that's helping. But there's also been local people in the area too that they don't know what coalition, they don't, they're not on social media. They just bring the wood up or they help carry it up, and I appreciate everybody working together on that. My mom was hiking that thing for over a decade. I mean, before, before it got so heavily trodden, it's been something in the community that I think that if we're going to take responsibility for, we need to go the full route. I think there's been some questions on liability that the city administration, the mayor, has been hesitant to do so. And so I'll be, I'll be interested to see his take because, like Paico Ridge, the development in between New Valley and Kuleo Oo, they don't want to see that transaction actually fully through because as the managing director has apparently said to the landowners, that they don't want to inherit other people's problems. So... So I got to see where they stand on this issue.
I believe it's a community asset and it's worth preserving. It's a wonderful trail. People go up there all day long, every single day. And it's actually in the mayor's budget, the $1 million. And I completely support it. I think the city should take ownership of it. What I would hate to see it being like the Stairway to Heaven, where it's locked up and nobody can get up there. Because it really is beautiful and it's a great exercise. And people run up that thing all the time. And it's dangerous. It really is. Someone fell the other day and one of the, one of railroad spikes got them in the rib. And people are getting rescued up there all the time. We got to fix it. And I fully support it.
We talked about this briefly earlier, but Bob in Huaikai wants to hear more about your positions on short-term rentals and monster homes. How do we curtail the short-term rental issue? I know, you know, you've, I think you've both said before that this is really an enforcement issue, but what can actually be done?
You know, Department of Permanent Planning really could do more, I believe. You know, I always said this, that they could go online, make a reservation, put down a credit card and walk up. And when they are handed the keys, they cite, cite the owner. It really does change the character of our neighborhoods. Now that, you know, transit vacation rentals, that's where the, the home is completely rented out versus a bed and breakfast where the owner stays on property. I think there might be room for those types of situations. You know, where people are having a hard time making ends meet so they can rent out a room here or there. But they got to provide off-street parking and they have to live on the premises so that they can control what's going on. Because my big concern is, when you have a transit vacation rental where the whole house is rented, you don't know who's next door, right? It changes your whole neighborhood. It really does. And what happened in Lani Kai and Waimea Nalo, they proliferated because they were gone unchecked. And if we don't watch out, Diamond Head, Kahala, all the way to Huaikai is going to be the same way.
What do you think can be done to curtail this issue?
Well, first of all, I've supported the moratorium on monster houses while in the council, and that passed. And so we have that monster, that monster house moratorium. I started the fight against monster houses when a constituent of mine, Missy, up in Mauna Lani Heights, had her entire view plane blocked right in front of her. I mean, just, it seemed like feet away to her because it was so monstrous. She used to see Diamond Head.
This at Cocoa Drive?
Cocoa Drive, yeah. Used to see Diamond Head. And then boom, imagine your living room window, all you see is two-by-fours and paneling going up. It was disturbing. And that's, that's really when I said, you know what? This is getting really out of hand. And as we started to talk to more community members, a community group formed. And basically, we've been working on this for a couple of years now. And now we've got a land disordinance amendment that I drafted a couple of years ago now. And it's come out of the Planning Commission. DPP has added their proposals. And I support most of it, but I wanted it to go even further. Specifically, I've called for a requirement of, a requirement on the amount of impervious surfaces on the, on the property. So you can't just have 100% concrete on your property. Because what happens in our neighborhoods, in our district, is when it rains, a lot of these places are on slopes, right? Kaumakeve and Mauna Lani Heights, when it rains, you start flooding your neighbors. Infrastructure problems, water drainage problems, the parking, as was mentioned. People are making parking stalls on these driveways that don't even, you're not able to even get a car to, if you actually look at it. So actually enforcing the law and applying a common sense approach for these inspectors to go out there and see that clearly people are circumventing the law and crack down on that. I put in $400,000 into the budget last year as Budget Chair with recommendation from a colleague of mine, Councilmember Pine, to go ahead and allow the city DPP workers to purchase them, to actually use that budget money to purchase a rental in one of these places and see what it's like and crack down. Or whether it was short-term vacation rentals. And those are the types of things that we need to make sure the county, city and county is doing. We also have to tax them and collect that tax and that revenue. Because that's a place where we're leaving money on the table that people, people want to be able to collect that money. The community has spoken. They want these people to pay their taxes. And so we don't need to raise trash fees. We don't need to raise property tax assessments when we got places to look for money now.
The two of you have faced off many times over the last four years. I'm just curious to know, there seems to be a lot of agreement on the issues between the two of you. What do you see, we'll start with you, as your biggest difference from your opponent?
Well, I think temperament is probably the biggest. I mean, I tell everybody that we can agree, we could disagree, we can agree to disagree, but never be disagreeable. You know, I really believe that if you all roll up our sleeves, sit down together and work hard, we can solve anything. You know, you got to have hope. You got to believe that you can solve problems. And I'm very patient, I'm a good listener, I return calls promptly, I return your emails. You know, I'd like to have the chance to show people. And trust is something that's earned. You know, and I'm, I'm the new guy, right? Coming in, I want to prove to everybody that I could do this job and I can do it well. You know, and I used to represent Waimea Nalo in the neighbor, in the legislature. You know, when the sewer was pumped into the injection wells at the Waimea Nalo wastewater treatment plant, my first term, I got the $18 million to fix that. When Mr. Seaberry died, when a drunk driver crossed Colony on Ole Highway, I got money to build a barrier so that it wouldn't happen again. I built two community centers in Waimea Nalo. And, you know, just give me the shot. Give me a shot to prove to this community what I can do. And I, I'd like people to ask folks in Kailua and Waimea Nalo, did Tommy do a good job? Are you happy with him? And, and I'm sure they're going to say yes. You know, I work hard every day.
So he says temperament. What do you see as the biggest difference between the two of you?
I think the biggest difference is integrity. Doing what you say and saying what you do. And I think when you look at what I've done, I've had, I've done it with passion, right? I'm from the district, from the area. That's a big difference as well. In addition, I'm not backed by the mayor, right? The mayor's funded him, maxed out, just stating the facts that, also the carpenters union and PRP, you know, so that's a big difference. I have no super PAC money. He has tens of thousands of it. So there's some big differences there. But when you actually look at it, you know, he said that people in Waimea Nalo and Kailua spoke highly. I was at the Ho'olalea at Kumamea and somebody came up to me and said, "I'm not in your district, I'm actually in Waimea Nalo." And, and I think that you can do a good job, you know, because you're going to follow through on projects. We had, we had some flooding issues. And I saw what you did out in Aina Hina in New Valley, how you got out there. And they couldn't say the same for the representative out of Waimea Nalo. And so I think that's a big difference.
Well, I haven't been the representative since 2008.
I didn't want to mention you, but they, they did mention that at the time that you were the representative. But I, again, I take that with a grain of salt, absolutely. But I, you know, we do have a lot of traits in common, attorney, Kumamea, but I, and I do, I do hold him in high regard. I do. He's a hardworking father of two. I am as well. So that being said, you know, we have run against each other a couple of times now, albeit I do have, I do have respect for this man and would say that, you know.
What, how do you answer that money, that money charge?
Well, I don't have super PACs, right? I mean, we cannot, I don't know what he's talking about there. You know, it really isn't about me and the mayor, although the mayor did give me a donation during the general election. This is about Mrs. Abe, who lives across from Kapalona Park and has to look at a downed telephone pole every day. This is about a little, little home road near the skate park where there's speeders going by and there's no traffic calming devices.
Well, all of that may be true, but your relationship with the mayor is very important as a council member and whether you're going to be a check on the mayor or whether you're going to be a rubber stamp, or, you know, some people would say whether you're going to be antagonistic to the mayor. There are a lot of perceptions in the community about where the two of you stand in relationship to your relationship with the mayor.
That's, that's true. And I think you, my job will be, and all of the council will be, to keep the mayor in check. That's all of our job. That's to me a given. But to be able to actually solve problems, you got to be able to work with whoever it is. By the way, this mayor's only going to be mayor for two years, more.
Well, that's a good point. Are either of you eyeing that job?
No, not at all. But by the way, it's possible that I could be...
I want to make sure that I get, get Trevor on the record, you're not interested in...
No, no, we're, no, no.
Okay, all right.
You know, he talked about super PACs. He raised $569,000 and spent $569,000 in the general election. You outspent me three to one. Oh my God. And now you're saying I'm supported by a super PAC? I mean, let's get real. What did you spend that $560,000 on?
If you look, if you look at the, the super PACs that I'm talking about, they're the ones out there canvassing, they're the ones out there registering people to vote if they support you. And those are the types of people that are also putting, buying media ads right now. And so that's what's been identified as super PACs. And they're not in support of me, they've endorsed you. So those are the super PACs that I'm talking about that are backing you. Obviously, each of us does not have our own super PAC that's not legal.
Well, obviously, the way super PACs work is, you're not supposed to know about that. You can't be working, you can't be working together.
Yeah, but it's on the, they support you and have endorsed you. And it's on the media buys that they've identified. Because you have to identify when you purchase the, any electioneering communications, it's a new rule in this election this past year. So that's, that's what I'm going on. We have no super PAC money that's buying media for us or, or any other ads. They're not canvassing for me or asking people to register. We're doing this again as we started in 2014. I was never in the State House of Representatives. I have no relationship with the mayor from before. And so we started this campaign going door to door and knocking on the doors back then. And although I've been in office for four years, I've still remained true to the fact that I am not in this political machine. I've always stood independently for the district. And I've said that sometimes we agree with the mayor and sometimes we don't. And, and we do agree to disagree at times. But at the same time, you got to have passion for the area that you live in. And I'm born and raised in the area. And that's why I care so much. You know, I look at me, my neighbors, my families that I know from growing up, my coaches, I'm trying to do good for them. And for me, that's a lot of, that's a lot of work that I think a council member is supposed to do. So my, my passion for the district is, is outpouring. I try to do my best at all times and I want to do right by the community.
Okay, well, let's get back to some of the issues that people are calling us about. Leonard in Waikiki wants to know your view on the nadatorium. What do you think should be done there?
Oh, I love the nadatorium. When I was, I was the Higher Education Chair in the House and I completely supported Dr. Lassiter, who's the Director of the Nadatorium. I'd like to see it improved even more. Sorry, we're talking about the aquarium versus the nadatorium. Pardon me.
Right, I was going to say, because the nadatorium right now, unfortunately, is just sort of there. It's, I mean, it's a beautiful relic, but it obviously could stand to do a lot of improvement and it's an underutilized resource. A lot of people would either like to see it fixed or torn down. There's been talk of volleyball courts, there's all kinds of possibilities for that. Obviously, there's an expense, but where do you stand on that?
I wish we could restore it. I mean, it's a beautiful site. It's a war memorial. But the fact of the matter is, when we got bigger, bigger problems like homelessness, we can't afford it. So I support moving the arches back, demolishing the actual swimming area and increasing Kamana Beach. Kamana Beach is a beautiful beach. A lot of local people enjoy that spot. So that, that's what I would support.
What about you? What do you think we should do with the nadatorium?
Yeah, the, the arches, as you mentioned, the arches are actually the memorial. And I don't think that everybody realizes that.
But the pool is so beautiful.
The pool is, but the maintenance on this and the cost, I mean, it's not just saying that it's too expensive just to sit. It really is. The main, we've looked into it and as the, the city and county and the mayor was supposed to have a plan in place by 2016 in the beginning, spring of 2016, that plan got kicked down the road. And I, he hasn't come down on a conclusion himself, what his position is. I support, like, we do, we do agree on this. I do support moving, keeping the arches, expanding the beach and cleaning up the area. We got married right there by the aquarium. I know that area very well. And as we walked down on our wedding day by the, by the arches and whatnot, it was like, wow, this is, this is amazing. But I was thinking, looking back, you know, at our video, I'm thinking, wow, that would be really nice if all of that was, was fixed up and nice. I think in the future, somebody will be really happy when that place is fixed up.
Do you think it should be a stretch of beach then?
Yeah, I think there should be sand. And there's just not enough area out there in Waikiki really for just pure beach. You got the areas by the hotels, but a lot of locals come to Kamana, right? A lot of paddlers, surfers. I used to surf out there all the time, up by graveyards and just a little to the left. But that area is nice. And if we could have more accessibility for families and local people, so be it.
Okay, well, right up the road is the zoo. And Thomas wants to know, what are your plans for the aging infrastructure of the zoo? It's outdated for a world-class city. Is there a plan to fund the zoo?
You know, I wouldn't be opposed to privatizing the zoo, you know? I, I think that's a public-private partnership that could work, bring in private money to improve the zoo. You know, I haven't been there in years because my kids have grown. I used to go there quite a bit, which I'm sure both of you go there now quite a bit because of the age of your children. But we need to be very careful though, because this is part of Kapialani Park, right? And we got to be very respectful to that, that entity as well.
Well, there was a question in here that I wanted to get to that, and I'll let you answer the zoo question, but on Kapialani Park, just the idea of all the commercial activity that we see there, what's your stance on that?
Well, I think it's in their, in their deed that they cannot have commercial activity in Kapialani Park.
Nevertheless, we do see quite a bit of it.
Well, what's come up recently is having the bikes in Kapialani Park beiki and whatnot. But, you know, I would rather see, well, the city put a little bit more money. The grass is terrible. There's a lot of really fire ants all over the place, kids playing soccer, softball and whatnot. We could do a lot more to increase, well, to, to make the park more usable.
What do you think about the zoo?
The zoo, first of all, we need to prioritize a plan to get AZA reaccreditation. It was disappointing that about two years ago, we lost AZA accreditation under this mayor for the first time in the history of the zoo. So prioritize an AZA reaccreditation plan and then fund the projects that we need to get that in order, right? One through 10, whatever it is, prioritize the funding of the most critical needs and what it's going to take to get reaccredited. Second of all, you know, I created a zoo working group while I was in the council. And so I spent a lot of time on this issue. Plus, as you said, I do have young kids and I do like taking them there. So it's enjoyable for me and other young families, really. But, but also, if you look at the, the problems that we've had with animals escaping, it shows that, it shows that our basic infrastructure on the zoo needs to be, needs to be prioritized.
You think it should be privatized?
Yes, it should be a public-private partnership. All AZA accredited zoos that I've been to, that I've seen, do have this model of a public-private partnership. I pushed that model upon the administration and they have not moved in that direction. But I remember meeting with the, the zoo in Manhattan, in New York City, and in the Bronx Zoo. And they're one of, they're the best, one of the best zoos in the, in the country, along with Cincinnati and others, but, and San Diego. I also met with the people in San Diego. They've all moved towards this model. It's a, it's a trilateral negotiation. There's no, there's no loss of jobs, there's no decrease in union jobs. It's really a win-win-win. I also implemented and drafted a bill that called for a zoo sponsorship program. So we can get private money in now and go ahead and start funding things like these cages that are breaking down, animals escaping, glass cracking with wild animals there. I gave, I gave the Department of Enterprise Services in the mayor's office the set of rules from the Woodland Parks Zoo in Seattle. And they said, here, here's a good, here's a good way to start off with this zoo sponsorship program. To this date, over three years later, they still have not implemented any rules on the zoo sponsorship program. And it's disappointing for me to see that the Department of Enterprise Services, the mayor's department, isn't making that a priority. Because there are people and organizations in the community, like schools and churches and hospitals, hotels, that want to give money to fix the zoo because they all care about it. But it's not going anywhere.
What about, what about that issue of commercial activity at Kapilani Park? Surf stands, weddings? This caller from Diamond Head wants to know what you're going to do to decrease commercial activity in that park. Because as Tommy did say, and as we know, that is not supposed to be happening there.
Yeah, it's not supposed to happen. It's the Kapilani Park Trust, and it calls for no commercial activity there, other than specific things like the zoo. But no, there shouldn't be commercial activity in the park. So we just need to make sure that the park rules are being enforced. I drafted and supported a resolution urging the administration and the mayor to create a park rangers program. It was, it was met with some resistance at first, but right now, we have a park ranger program. We have park rangers in Alamoana Beach Park, as well as in Waikiki and in Kapilani Park. And at Kapilani Park, I spoke with the ranger, the park ranger, about a month and a half ago, down there by the bandstand. And he indicated that, look, I just wish that we had a little bit more authority, because all we can do now is call people, and it's just me. I've got to do the whole park. So he just calls 911, and then he waits. But he'd like to be able to at least cite people.
That is a lot for one.
For breaking the rules.
Can I just address the zoo thing? Because it's easy to point the finger and say, the mayor, the mayor, the mayor, right? Again, you know, this mayor's only going to be the mayor for the next two years. But, you know, the city council could take a lead on, on this issue. And it's one thing to just object to this, object to that, but how about take a leadership role and draft legislation saying exactly what we want to do at the zoo? And then convincing the mayor that this is the right thing to do.
That flows into this next question. We only have a few minutes. There's two more questions I want to get to, so if you could each be brief, just so that we get to everybody.
Sure.
Lloyd in Waikiki wants to know, what new unstarted initiative would each of the candidates start if elected? So what would you, what would you stand behind? What's something new that you would present?
Well, you know, first things first, we've got to be more fiscally responsible, I think, number one, right? It comes back to what we're talking about, how are we going to pay for things? Are we going to raise taxes to do what we want to do? And right now, I think rather than having new initiatives, we need to look at our bottom line and try to save money.
Okay. Trevor, where are you on that?
I would go, then a new initiative for the next term would be a cloud-based city. So making sure that the Department of Information Technology starts transitioning to the next century of technology and going into a cloud-based system. We have antiquated software issues and hardware issues at the city, cost us a ton of money to repair and maintain. It's outdated, and we're years behind other cities.
Okay. This is the last...
You cut 10% of their budget when you were the council chair, the budget chair, didn't you? Well, you made a 10% cut across the board.
Oh, I didn't.
Which, to be, that's troublesome.
No, I didn't, actually.
We have two minutes left, so I want to ask each of you, and this will be the last question. I love this one from a viewer. Obviously, voters in this area are split on candidates due to the close vote, which means half of the constituents could be unhappy with the outcome. How can each of you appeal to his opponent's base? So this is the last question tonight. We'll start with you.
Well, I've been walking door to door, geez, since January 2018, now about 15,000 doors. Just meeting people, getting to know the district street by street is just so helpful, right? I know what, what's going on in Pahoa Street because I've walked it. Seniors can't cross the street there. We need traffic calming devices. We need, in certain instances, stoplights, right? Like I mentioned, in Hawaii Kai, on Onululule Home Road near the skate park, walking door to door, meeting neighbors, figuring out what's needed there. And by the way, I probably lived in this district for over 30 years. I can remember when the Jolly Roger was where the zippies is.
Okay, I'm going to have to leave it there just to give you the last 30 seconds here. What, how can you appeal to the folks who are supporting him, given how close this race has been?
Well, I'm having open door policy, and for the last four years, we've been continuing to be in the community. You know, there's been people even from four years ago that didn't support me, actually or him, in, in the last election. And we've helped them. We've helped people. You know, it doesn't matter who you support in this election. Whoever's the council member is going to be responsible for helping everybody, because we can't do this with only 50% of the people. We need everybody's input, because everybody has an idea, and we need to hear from them.
Okay.
I didn't just pop up, and I've been walking for four years in this district.
All right. Well, we're going to have to leave it there. We know you both have done a lot of walking in the district. Before we go, we do want to provide you with some key information for voters in District Four. As we said earlier, the city will mail out ballots a week from today. You can also vote absentee at Honolulule Hale starting Monday, April 1st through Friday, the 12th, excluding Sundays from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. You can register to vote right there and then cast your ballot. And then on Saturday, April 13th, you cast your ballot at Honolulule Hale from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. You can register on that day as well. The votes will be counted, and the results released that night, April 13th. Mahalo to you for joining us tonight. Of course, we do thank our guests, Trevor Ozawa and Tommy Waters.